Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Dawson County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Today is November 6, 2025. Appreciate all those that are with us in attendance as well as those that are with us online. We're going to start out with a public hearing. This is a first hearing for the FY 2026 proposed budget. This is the first of three hearings. The second hearing will be held at 6:00 today, and the third hearing will be held at 6:00 PM on November 20, 2025 voting session, at which time, if the board desires, they would be able to adopt a 2026 budget. As we've done in the past, I think before we open up the hearing, let's kind of go over any changes or additions, deletions that anybody on the board would like to do. We did get some information from Tiffany, so I'll go over those first and then open it up to the board to discuss whatever they'd like to. And y'all saw this, Tiffany sent out, "The sheriff's office, the night shift differential was 104,000, previous budget reflected in account coding error. So the current trend shows this additional amount is needed. An inmate medical contract, an increase of 35,000. We received an updated contract, and the amount currently budgeted is short by this amount. And then the med pay program, an increase of 35,000. Earlier trends were based on partial implementation in 2024. With the program fully active, costs are higher on a full yearly basis. Transit, a decrease of $51,525. A transit manager position is being covered under grant funding, allowing a reduction to this local budget. And then salary contingency, a decrease of 250,000 based on staffing trends. We believe this reduction can be made without operational impact." The net impact is these changes result in an approximate net reduction of $127,525 to the FY 2026 proposed budget. So that information for our citizens out there, and then I will open up to anyone who has something they would like to say before we open it up to the public. Okay? All right. So at this time, I'll open up this public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on the FY 2026 budget? Anyone? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close that hearing. The second hearing will be today at 6:00 at the voting session. All right. And move on into new business. First up, we have informational presentation of business case and feasibility study results related to employee primary care clinic. Alliant Insurance Services Senior Vice President Tammy Starkley. Tammy?
Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow me, I want to introduce Tammy Starkley as well. And just a brief history of what you're about to hear. This summer, we engaged with Alliant, who Tammy works for, to just look at the feasibility of an employee primary health clinic. And what she's presenting tonight is some of the results of looking at a lot of data. Just wanted to preface what she was going to talk about, but we're glad she's here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. So with Alliant, I work dedicated with public entities, public cities, counties, and school systems across the state to manage the employee benefits package, manage cost and value. And one of the proven strategies that we have implemented over the last decade, specifically with cities and counties, is advanced primary care or onsite, near-site primary care solutions. So we have a dedicated consulting team that helps our city and county clients evaluate, is there a need for this? Does it meet the goals of the organization? Does it suit the needs of your employees? And then what is the feasibility to see value, not just in the care of the employees, the health of the employees, but also financially in managing the health plan cost overall? So our team does that by this first step that we're talking through this evening, which is the analysis of what is the projected service and costs that we could drive through a clinic? The model options that are available to consider will then assist if the county determines that there is an interest or desire to move forward. We can help with the procurement process of evaluating the different vendors that provide these services. We can evaluate any hospital systems, local providers that could provide these services. So we'll do a full evaluation, then assist with the implementation to make sure that we're reviewing the appropriate facility, the needs of that facility, the staffing that's going to exist, the technology and the supplies that are going to be needed. And then from there, we would continue to assist the county in evaluating the effectiveness and the outcomes of that advanced primary care model. So making sure that we're providing clinical oversight, we're integrating that data into the health plan so that we're looking at a total cost of the benefits that the county's providing versus the value that you're receiving, your employees are receiving from that model. So to review the business case, our consulting team first looked at the current state of the county. What is our goal primarily? At this point, we're looking at, how do we manage the increasing cost of the health insurance? We know that annual trend has increased from an average of seven to eight percent to this year projected to move forward into 10%. And that's kind of a do-nothing scenario, just the rising cost of care, aging populations that need more care that we see within public entities. And so as we look at your premiums on the health plan, how do we help stabilize that? So how do we manage cost, improve cost, drive patients to better solutions and outcomes for cost, and then in the end, improve the health of the population that impacts the claims expense that drives the cost? So we looked at the demographics of the population, your current health plan, your shift schedules, your availability for care for urgent care, emergency room hospital, your primary care access within the county, and then what other solutions do we have that currently exist, like the MD Live, the virtual care, that may be supplemented or replaced by this type of model to improve or offset cost? So as we evaluate the need for this, you know, we're looking at the state of community primary care. I think it's no secret that we're seeing just an overwhelming number of patients that try to get into primary care physicians, a reduction in availability. A recent Journal of American Medicine survey said that when they evaluated, surveyed primary care physicians, the average 2,500 patients in their panel, in their office, they would need 26.7 hours a day to service that panel that exists within their patient base. So there's literally not enough hours in the day to provide appropriate outcomes-based care at the rate that we have of the availability of primary care versus the need within the patient population. So what does that drive? That drives rushed visits, that drives lack of relationship potentially with your primary care physician, a lack of understanding of truly what's driving your experience from family history to your lifestyle and your family. So a lack of trust and a poor experience. So what we're trying to replace with that, with a primary care, advanced primary care model, is to have accessible primary care where patients can get in same day if needed, when they truly need that for urgent situations, for sick visits, but also collaborative care, where we have a tiered staffing model, and it could be an MD, a nurse practitioner, physician's assistant, and have all services available within that clinic home. So that's going to include not just your primary care, but that acute care-type visits, pharmacy solutions, lab care. So patients are able to easily access that, build a relationship within that staff, and drive high-value, outcomes-based care, because they can take the time to understand the patient's needs, to truly evaluate what is impacting their health, and guide them through that. So more than just acute care, but helping them manage chronic conditions, their lifestyle, their health goals. So when we get to that, where we're driving value is on the employee side, their dependents that are engaged within the clinic, that now they have convenient access to care, lower out-of-pocket cost, often no out-of-pocket cost, depending on the design that you put into a potential care model, and they have high-quality providers that are really invested in their care and building that relationship to understand their needs and help impact their well-being. And on the employer's side, where the county benefits is that now that you've got patients truly engaged in care, they are increasing their preventive services, so they're identifying their risk factors early, then you're impacting their health and driving a lower total cost of care into your health plan. So when people need to go outside of that clinic model, they have a chronic condition, need to go to the hospital, we're catching things early and improving the overall well-being of the population. And then we're also looking at increased productivity, because now with this model, we have dedicated access, so less time away from work for a visit, and also you're improving their health so that there are less absenteeism. So as we look at benchmarking, our consulting team does an annual employer health center survey, and we see an increasing trend of employers either offering advanced primary care strategies and solutions to their employee population, or considering that into the next year. Currently, 35% of government entities offer primary care clinics through their employment. Some examples of county governments with clinics, and many of these I have worked with over the years to implement and to ensure that they are operating at the best capacity in receiving an ROI. So I've highlighted some of these here that are throughout Georgia, but we're seeing just a high number because of such a locally-based employee population. It makes a lot of sense to offer this type of solution to supplement benefits, drive the well-being of the population, and manage cost of your health insurance. I provided some case studies in the presentation, but really just looking at, you know, overall what these government entities are seeing is a high patient satisfaction with the care and attention that they receive within the onsite clinic model. They're improving their biometrics. So when we look at A1Cs within the population and those that stay engaged, we're seeing A1Cs improve, blood pressure improve, because they're staying engaged with that primary care physician to understand what lifestyle decisions am I making that impact these things? And a lot of it goes to education, a lot of it goes to that support of helping set those goals, and how do I move forward in my care? And then just overall preventive care adherence of getting their preventive screening, making it easy for them to get those preventive screenings. And the end outcome we see is just overall health plan trends bending from what we're seeing on a national level. Columbus Consolidated Government is the last one there that I had worked with for several years. We saw the last seven years, no increase in employee health insurance premiums, because they had reduced their overall trend to below 5% in what they were spending year over year within their health insurance. A lot of just managing within the clinic, lower cost of care at that point solution, but improved well-being within the population. And then for the survey, overall, we're seeing a return on investment, 94% of employers with onsite clinics are reporting greater than a one-to-one ROI, and 52% reporting greater than a two-to-one ROI. So we evaluated within the county's health plan, the different areas where you're going to drive value and drive savings. So we're looking at not just primary care, but the labs, the pharmacy, emergency room by avoiding emergent care, so because patients now have access to care when they need it, avoiding costly urgent care services, care navigation to lower-cost facilities, and even into occupational health of driving pre-employment testing, managing cases to save on that side. When we talk about guiding patients to valuable care and lower-cost solutions that are going to save them in their out-of-pocket expenses, but also impact the claims within the health plan, this slide shows directly from Dawson County's claim data how widely different services can vary based off of where you receive those services. So that first chart is the same CPT code for an MRI. And so we're looking at different outpatient facilities where MRIs were received, and you can see it ranges from $721 claims cost for the MRI to over $10,000. So that's where the navigation within that clinic staff of understanding the availability for services, who's going to provide best outcomes and best value, and helping navigate patients to that, because most patients have no idea that this type of differential exists in the cost of care. So with the feasibility model, again, we did look at the specific experience on Dawson County's plan of where claims lie, the providers that are utilized, and the cost of those services. And we evaluated three different models at this time. One, a full-time model, 40 hours a week, five days availability. We're looking at annual operational costs, so that's going to be for the staffing, for any facility fees, your supplies, so things for the labs, any medications. So that's what goes into the annual cost expectations, and then also if you have the management fee of a company that's providing these services. So full-time, we're looking at by year five, because this does take time to get engagement and see an impact to the health of the population and see the utilization where it should be. We're projecting a one-to-one ROI, or 1.1-to-one ROI, so $710,000 in savings based off of lower cost of claims, avoidable claims, and impacting those within the health plan. If we look at a part-time model, so looking at 20 hours a week, that goes to 1.5 ROI. And then we also considered the opportunity of a shared model. If the county wanted to consider pulling another local employer in, potentially a city, the water authority, then you could look at sharing in the cost of that, so reducing your overall investment and monthly cost, and still seeing the total impact of the annual savings that you would with a full-time clinic. So that's a 2.3 ROI. So with that, that's accounting, again, for claims, impact to productivity. It doesn't account for the reduction in employee cost share, because typically when you're offering this clinic, you're offering it no cost to the employees. So they have no co-pay, they have no deductible, they're not paying for prescriptions that they're receiving through the clinic, and we're also not calculating the impact to recruitment and retention. These really drive value within your employee benefits program, and so when you're able to implement, employees start getting engaged, it's something that they don't want to lose access to. Also, on the spouse side, we would propose offering this to the spouses. When we look at pediatric care, that's something to consider as you get underway with it, because there are regulations around the providers that can provide pediatric care. So overall, you know, we see a large opportunity for the county to consider this model, particularly within the shared model, if that is something that you're open to partnering with another employer and seeing significant savings year over year. And I'll open up for any questions.
Questions for Tammy?
What this is proposing is having somebody basically in-house or own. You don't have any calculations on facility space or anything. This is just management of the program is what the cost estimates that you've calculated, or does that include facility space?
It doesn't include the facility space. We had had some conversation about potentially available real estate that may be utilized for that, but it includes all other costs. So it includes the management, the staffing, the supplies for an annual basis.
And I had to go back and look at last year's renewal. I know a lot of our dependents is what was driving, our cost, and there at the very end, you mentioned spouses, but no children. Do you contemplate what the, when you do your ROI calculations, do you contemplate what the claims expense was for children that are not going to be included in this program? Is that...
The ROI is accounting for employee and spouse claims expenses and the impact that can be made to those, but not children under 15.
But you looked at our actual, and that's where you're coming up with that ROI, is our actual claims expense?
Correct, yes.
Minus the children are backed out of that.
Correct.
Okay. The counties that you currently serve or this program is in, I noticed some of them are fairly large. Can you give us a breakdown of what their budget is so we can look at a comparison as far as like size-wise? I mean, obviously, it may make sense for larger organizations potentially, but just for additional data for us.
Yeah, I can work to get that. You know, some of these definitely are larger, some are similar, but I think that's where the shared model makes more sense, is because you can drive more utilization through it, share in that expense, but still have the same capacity for the county's population. So that's why that is likely the preferred solution.
And you have that model, I mean, you showed counties, but you, some of those are shared models?
Yes, we do have some that have shared models.
Okay. You answered the shared deal. You said by year five is where we start breaking even, but obviously, year five, that ROI doesn't contemplate the lost cost for the previous four years.
So typically, so what we saw, we did year-over-year analysis, break even is year two, because we do typically have, and I can share with you that, but I just showed year five, because that's what you'll see ongoing. But yeah, we see break even year two within your data.
I thought you said it was one-to-one ROI in year 1.1, but it's still only $100,000. Okay, we'll look at that deeper. Okay.
In this model, I know you spoke briefly about it, about having an MD, and, you know, what does the breakdown of what you calculated in for the county to provide? Is that an MD, a PA, an MP, all three with two or three nurses and a secretary? I mean, what does that breakdown of employment look like?
Yes, so for the, what we modeled with this business case was a nurse practitioner, a physician's assistant, a lab person, and then an office manager.
So no MD?
No MD within this model.
You said that does, that, that number included medication expense, prescription expense?
Well, so within Georgia, there are newer regulations over the last few years of being able to dispense without a MD onsite. So the opportunity now is to fill those mail orders, so you can still supply those ongoing medications that are needed in a mail order environment, but within Georgia, you can't dispense onsite without an MD present.
But you said there's no cost to the employee for medication.
Correct.
So does that, in your ROI analogy, that $622,000 for full-time include in medication cost?
Yes, it does.
Other questions for Tammy?
How often do you do a public-private partnership with, organizing these with local, you know, other operations? So we have Northside Hospital, we have Northeast Georgia that are here local, and Piedmont. Do you find that there's synergy if they come together and do a public-private partnership for these?
Yeah, absolutely. We've had that happen in multiple scenarios, where they're partnering with local health systems to pull in their expertise and their solutions that already exist within the community, and doing a dedicated solution for the county. One thing we do have to be cautious of is typically insurance carriers... insurance carriers like Anthem and Cigna won't allow you to do a direct contract with a facility or provider that is within their network. So, there are some workarounds for that of being able to provide those solutions as you're paying them a management fee and not direct contract to go within their facilities. But we've had City of Marietta partner with Wellstar. I've had other counties with partner with other health systems. And it works really well, because they're so experienced within the model to bring it in.
And I had one other question, and just lost my mind. Yeah, our utilization or take rate, or whatever you refer to it, as with Teladoc, which we have offered for free for clients for several years now, is miniscule, I think. I don't think our employees use the free service that's there, which obviously was a cost that we bore in order to try to mitigate further health insurance costs. But employees choose not to utilize that. So, you anticipate a better utilization of this program than the other free services that is a telephone call?
Absolutely. I think a lot of people have more confidence in going onsite. And sometimes with telehealth, it's just out of sight, out of mind. They forget that they have that resource. And so, what we would look at is can this replace the telehealth solution by having that integrated within the primary care model or the clinic model so that they do still have after-hours access? But now, it's integrated into their patient records within the clinic so that they feel more connected with the providers that they're contacting.
Other questions?
And also, this additional information provided in this, in this handout here, didn't want, you had to spend 45 minutes going through it. So, for sake of time, there is some additional information about the study that was conducted in this document.
And I also included our annual employer survey regarding health centers, if you just want some fun reading material later.
And it's a long-term commitment. I mean, it's not a, you can't dive into this thing and see that it's not working. I mean, you need to commit in order to see a return on that of a minimum of five years, essentially.
I agree. Because you are making an upfront investment, potentially in facility and, you know, building that out or customizing the technology that you need behind it with like a ERM. So, with that, you do have upfront costs. It is going to take multiple years to recoup. And sometimes you see that now, if employees and spouses are more engaged in their health and they're doing preventive services, you may uncover health conditions they didn't realize that they had. So, you could see an impact on that. But overall, you're going to impact long-term trend by that earlier identification.
I mean, that's just a time thing.
Is there, do any of these clinics, do you ever bring in like nutritionists to help as well?
Yeah, often that's a part of the coaching. And so, you could also set that up telephonically if we're not going to provide dedicated staff. And that's part of what we would look at in the staffing model and the procurement is what makes sense for utilization. And you can adapt that over time if you see more of a need for it. But often, we'll do it as a virtual solution of having, you know, ongoing coaching. And part of that is nutrition, it's exercise, and providing them with access to that to meet with a coach bi-weekly that's helping with their goals.
But if we're not using the telemedicine, like Chris pointed out, I mean, how, the Teladoc stuff, is that, I mean, how, how much implementation can you get if they're already not using a service that's free? If it's going to be a telemedicine-type appointment?
I think it's a little bit different, because the telemedicine right now is more kind of acute urgent care type, where you're like, I have a cold, I have a sinus infection. What are the options for me? And they can prescribe a medication or direct you to care. This is going to be more of an ongoing relationship. So, once they engage with the clinic provider, they could say, look, these are my goals. I want to lower my A1C, I want to lose 20 pounds. And they can set them up with that wellness coach that they're going to meet with ongoing to help them determine what's it going to take to meet those goals and help keep them on track. And that's something they can decide if they want to continue to meet with that health coach. But that's really where you see members impacting their health, is just having that education and encouragement.
I think that goes too, along with the thing that came through our entrance that people are using. It's really being utilized, and people are following it. So, I think that that sounds more, because it's goals they want to be met versus like Teladoc, like she said. I only use it, I've only used it once as a commissioner. But it was because my doctor was like, you don't have a sinus infection. And I was like, I want antibiotic anyway. And they always give it to you.
Yeah, you're like, I know I do, I know that I want this.
And they give it to you because they can't see you. They can't prove that you don't.
Right.
So, they're like, I'm better off giving you medication. And so, that's, I mean, realistically, like, I feel like that's when Teladoc is used. Or you're desperate, you don't want to go wait in the doctor's office for two hours or whatever. So.
Other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation of FY 2026 Highway Enforcement of Aggressive Traffic, the HEAT grant, and Lieutenant Pearson.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Alec Pearson. I'm currently our lieutenant of our Crime Suppression Unit with the Sheriff's Office. Our Crime Suppression Unit encompasses our K-9 and our HEAT. In 2020, or October of 2020, we were awarded the HEAT grant from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. This is a presentation for the continuation of accepting that HEAT grant for the October 2025 through September of 2026. This will be used for the salaries and other expenditures for two deputies. I'm going to read these numbers off, so I don't get them wrong. This year's award is $136,977.85. The state's award is $27,395.57, with our local match of $109,582.28. The Sheriff's Office liked the commissioners to accept this award for 2025, 2026. It's a big help for our community.
Questions? Lieutenant Pearson? Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation of a resolution authorizing Department of Public Works to proceed with necessary property and/or property rights and interests with Lumpkin Campground Road at State Route 53 intersection improvement project. Public Works Director Robert, Robert?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for the long title.
It's all right.
Still fairly new to us. Right-of-way acquisition, we're still kind of getting acclimated to it. And I brought to you before one previous request for Elliott Road. Very similar to that project is BM&amp;K has estimated what the right-of-way cost is going to be for the intersection of Lumpkin Campground Road and State Route 53. And, you know, there's some, there's some contingency in that estimate, of course. But they've estimated it $460,000. $480,000 was what was printed. But since then, they've come back and said it's actually, it looks like it's going to be $460,000. That's for the right-of-way cost. And then, keep in mind, that's not strictly for the right-of-way itself. It is for fee simple right-of-way, it will be for permanent easements and temporary easements. But there's also some other factors involved, like what they refer to as cost to cure, damages, things of that sort. A couple of them have signs, not elaborate signs, but signs. All those have a figure to it. And again, plus the, plus the contingency. But this is just an estimate, and I'm asking the board to approve the estimate through a resolution. We've started actively, started actively communicating with a few of the residents, or not, shouldn't say residents, a few of the owners. There's a total of 11 parcels. And the construction plans are 90% complete. The only reason we can't say 100% because they're coordinating with the utility companies to make sure there's no changes from them. And until the right-of-way is secure, then they'll call them 100%. Because oftentimes, they have to go back and change the plans as a result of utilities and/or right-of-way. So, just asking for the board to authorize the acquisition process and the budget we've got set forth. Any questions?
Questions for Robert?
No, just glad to see this project getting some legs. It's my nemesis intersection.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have a presentation, RFP 483-25, Construction Services Law Enforcement Center Roof Replacement Purchasing Manager, Melissa Hawke. Ms. Melissa?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners.
Good afternoon, Melissa Hawke.
Splat 7 includes the replacement of the roof on the law enforcement center. And the current roof is original to the structure which was built in 2006. Of course, we did this according to policy, and we received two proposals. The evaluation committee comprised of the Facilities Director, Randy Patrick, Captain Anthony Davis, and Lieutenant Teresa Kirby. Those two both are of the Sheriff's Office. Overview of the scope of work is to recover the entire roofing system with a TPO membrane. A high-density coverboard will go underneath that membrane. Walkpads will go around the roofing perimeter and leading up to the HVAC units. And flashing kits will be used where needed. Repair to damaged areas of the existing membrane will also take place. And coring to check for moisture and clean thoroughly. And then, lastly, of course, they'll do the installation. Roof Technology offered a total cost of $227,237.19. And that's for all work included. And again, they submitted the best offer for the county. And their score is one point less than their competition. But overall, they were the best for the county. Staff respectfully requests the board to accept offers received, award a contract to Roof Technology Partners in the amount of $227,237.19, with a $50,000 county-controlled contingency using Splat 7 funds. And I know we don't normally come to you for a flat dollar amount. It's normally a percentage. But with the age of this roof, and there have been several leaks and repairs over the years, we don't really know what's going to happen underneath there until that contractor gets up there and starts doing their coring. And again, this is going to be controlled by the county, so it doesn't necessarily mean it'll be used. But it'd be great if they could have it. And it's within what was allotted for Splat 7.
Questions for Melissa? You answered mine.
Good.
The walkpads, I mean, that's pretty substantial. How come they're only $24? Is that per square foot?
That's per square foot.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, that number?
All of those numbers are included in that final total.
Okay, so you do have the square foot? Because it's just $24 in the?
Right, right. They had calculated that during their pre-bid.
Other questions for Melissa? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
You have the next one. It looks like a presentation of requests for approval to extend one contract and exempt three services. Go ahead.
So, under Section 2115 of the current county purchasing policy ordinance, it allows the board to make concessions to contract terms. None of the contracts that are brought to you today are either road or highway, nor are they public works contracts. So, it's no issue to do these requests that the departments are asking for. So, to break that down, I'm just going to do the recommendations, so it's much easier. Staff recommends that the board approve the one-year extension for the swimming pool, chemical, and general maintenance contract for American Pool Aquatic Solutions, and then exempt from the bid policy for the inmate food services contract for Calwell Food Management, legal services contract for Gerard Davis, and the auditing services contract for Bates Carter until such time that the relative department wishes to rebid services. So, basically, those last three will mean that they will stay exempted until each department feels that they need to bid, such as if services start failing or they become too expensive for 2026. I'm sorry, 2027.
Questions for Melissa? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are those all 1-1 contracts? Are all effective 1-1?
They will be if you approve them, yes. They are all January 1 through December 31st each year.
Okay.
Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation of requests for funds, HVAC for new public health facility. County Manager Joey Leverett and Personnel Manager Melissa Hawke. Who's going to go first?
Okay, surely will. So, if you remember, on October 2nd, the board approved the scope of work amendment for the repurpose renovations contract to Pincor. And that's for the public health facility, which included the environmental health and the treatment court. During that meeting, we discussed the fact that the HVAC and low voltage would still need to be done. But at that time, we did not have the full pricing for all the HVAC, the other equipment that needs to go along with that, and other accessories. And since that time, we've gotten that price, so we're back with you today. The low voltage material and labors will be provided by the Georgia Department of Health, District 2's preferred vendor. That's ACG Solutions. And that funding for that portion of the work is underneath the equipment and the furniture that that particular Georgia Department of Public Health gave us on that one-time grant of $300,000. The part that's not included in this is the HVAC and the laboring materials, which was going to be done by Dawson County Facilities. We have a HVAC expert with us, luckily. And he's going to manage all of that as well. He is actually installing the HVAC units himself. That's going to include the HVAC units itself, ductwork and curb expenditures, and any other incidentals. And this cost is going to be $209,163. Sounds like a lot of money, but if we had allowed Pincor to do this, it would have been $290,210. And this is a savings of $81,047. So, with that being said, the staff has respectfully requested the board to approve $209,163 and utilize the general fund fund balance to complete the HVAC installation for the entire building. That's going to be for all three sides.
Questions for Melissa? Joey, anything to add?
Did a great job.
Yeah, and now, you do have on here that you'd like to move this forward, because I guess we're doing this work now out there?
We would like to be able to do this work very soon. Everything is on order and ready to go. But of course, we can't pay for it unless you approve it.
Yeah.
So, we want to make sure that we don't slow the process down. Pincor's been running pretty well out there.
Yeah, you know, and I'll agree with that. I mean, I think we're making some good progress out there. Went by there the other day, making good progress. And Joey and I talked about this a little bit. I think we could fund this out of fund balance. But I do think that with where we currently are in splotch, we're going to meet that dollar amount that we were talking about, probably about January of next year, which means we're still going to have about 18 months' worth of collections. So, we can pay for this now, but I think we can eventually make this completely splotch without it costing us anything out of the general fund. You can, as long as you stay in the same categories. You have to stay in the same categories. Even with, all the money that we would get above and beyond what we said we were going to collect, we'll have to still stay in the same categories. We can't spend that separately in something else. It'll have to be in the categories that are currently in splotch.
But if we spend it now, because I know that we're talking about using overage for the 911 system too.
Yeah. I think we could actually probably, personally, I think we could take it out of splotch now. Because we know we're going to get that money instead of taking it out of the general fund and just do straight out of splotch. I think we could do, I think we're capable of that. We may have to delay something else that's in splotch a day or two to make that happen till we gather a little bit of money. But I think we can make that happen. This is a project that's already going on, so I think we have that capability. Wouldn't you say?
I didn't say anything.
I was supposed to say, would you agree, though?
Oh, I agree 100%.
Okay, and Natalie gives a thumbs up as well through splotch. So, I would say if y'all are ready to move it forward, that we just do it in splotch. Now, good, we're moving it forward?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation of requests for two part-time temporary transit drivers at six months, positions due to staffing shortages at Dawson Transit. Joey, you going to do that one?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is a need that's come up very recently. Dawson Transit, which is, as you're aware, is a fairly small staffing organization. Or the organization has a pretty small number of staffing connected to it. Demand continues to be high for the use of the services. We currently have an unexpected vacancy and also had another employee out on a medical leave. Also, the holidays are coming up. We have a lot of folks taking vacation and leave that time. And we still desire to maintain as much of the service as we can. And one solution of that, that we think, is to add some temporary part-time drivers. We do think there's some people out there that would be interested in doing that temporarily. We also verify that these temporary positions can be paid for by the existing GDOC grants. Most all of this program is paid by existing GDOC grants. Most all of this program is paid by, not completely, but most of it is paid for by grants. And we did verify that these temporary positions could be paid for by grants. We're looking at, if they were to work all the hours, which I don't think they actually will, we wouldn't be more than $15,000. But also asking to move that forward tonight because of the need, you know, it takes a little while to get somebody hired, to get that process moving, to keep this program viable.
Questions for Joey? Y'all good moving that one forward?
Yes.
Okay. All right, County Manager report. Back to you.
Thank you, sir. Just a few items. We had a wonderful afternoon dedicating our ribbon, a ribbon-cutting event, our new E911 Emergency Operations Center this afternoon. And we did bring our plaque that's going to be on the wall at that facility, just for the public to see in the back there. And wanted to stand to thank you and well wishes to everyone who helped with that ribbon-cutting event. And we look forward to this building serving our community for many years to come. And just very, it's a big day, big day. We really appreciate everybody there. Secondly, a reminder that this Saturday, November 8, is Keep Dawson County's Beautiful Tire Amnesty Day. And that'll be at our transfer station between the hours of 8:00 and 5:00 p.m. On, the transfer station's on Burke Creek Road. This is a free event to bring yourself, bring your old tires laying around for recycling at no cost. Reminder that our county offices will be closed next Tuesday, November 11, in observance of Veterans Day. And also, Mr. Chairman, I do have a need for executive session tonight related to real estate and land acquisition. I do not think we have time between meetings to do that, so just, I'll just note that we could do that after the voting session.
I think we'll probably get some other updates for litigation, as well as probably personnel.
I think there's a couple of items.
I think we'll, we'll get around to that one in a little bit then. But yeah, we won't do that until after the regular meeting.
That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Questions for the County Manager? County Attorney, she's on her way. She's kind of got trafficked it, but she will be here around the 6 o'clock meeting time. And so that takes us to the end of our work session. It is now 5:47. So in 13 minutes, we'll be back for the voting session. Thank you for your attendance.